Apologize for the technical difficulties, but here we go. Let me read the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law's Chapter 38, 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some or all members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access via Zoom conference call platform, we will post a recording of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. The people I have are Chair, myself, Russell S. Fox, Vice Chair Doug Moguln, Joseph J. Dede, Member of the Select Board, Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt, Administrative Assistant Cindy Pendleton. So those are the people that are listed. And if we could begin by doing the Pledge of Allegiance, please. So if everybody could.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing, very quickly, is public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to Select Board, this would be your opportunity to do that. Is there anybody at this time that would like to make a public statement? I see none. So then we are going, we have a Class II hearing. I am going to step down from the board because I am a butter, and I'm going to ask the Vice Chairman to conduct the Class II hearing. Mr. Moguln, if you'll conduct the hearing, please.
It's been a while, Mr. Chairman. I'll see if it all comes back to me.
Okay.
What's the first thing? You have to read the public notice there, Carl?
Yep.
Okay. I found it.
Basically, Cindy gave it to everybody in their packets. We got them.
Notice is hereby given that the Southwick Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 26, 2020, at 6:05 in the Select Board Conference Room, Town Hall 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. To consider the reissuance of the Class II dealership, car dealership license presently held by landowner Zuber Realty LLC at 642 College Highway. And I apologize in advance. Mohammed Sadiq Abdul Kadir, who will do business as Silk Road Motor Cars LLC, set forth on the current license previously issued under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 58. deed and plot planner on file in the Select Board's office and location to be licensed is at 642 College Highway. Description of premises is follows. Building 40 by 60 foot with two offices and a six-bay garage. Russell S. Fox, Chairman; Doug Moguln, Vice Chairman; Joseph J. Dede, Clerk. Okay. Now we need a motion, I think, to open the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Who's that?
Joe Dede will make the motion.
Second?
That has to be you, Doug.
That would be me. Doug Moguln will second the motion. All in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye, Joe Dede.
Doug Moguln, aye? Any abstentions? Or you're just abstaining from the whole thing, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, he's on mute.
Okay.
Yeah, he's out. It's just me and you.
Okay. So this, like the Zoom equivalent of you stepping down?
Yeah, he's on a butter, so.
I got it. Just making clear, because you really can't step down in a Zoom meeting, right?
No, and I think they might own a dog, so he's nervous, so he's just out. That's a personal joke.
He's on mute, so you're just having at it, are you?
Yeah. We can sit there and laugh, we can torture him. Great.
Okay. So... What do I have here, Carl? What's next?
You have a package where the...
I have it.
It's gone through the planning board, and it's been looked at by zoning enforcement and the Paul Miles, who handles the Class II licenses. And it's basically to just have the same type of operation that was previously approved in the back of the parcel, because the front, the front business has all the parking up front, so the back business has the parking in the back pursuant to the documents that the planning board approved, signed, and filed in our office.
I understand. Okay. So does he... And we have the, the only thing I didn't see was the completed application, but I guess we'll, we'll get back to that.
There'll be more, if this passes, there'll be more paperwork that he'll have to give us.
Right. All right. So why don't we recognize the applicant and have him speak to whatever he needs to speak to here? Sir? Mister, I don't want to mispronounce your name again.
Yeah, I'm Mohammed Sadiq Abdul Kadir.
Okay.
And I'm the applicant. I think, I, given the set of application to Cindy, maybe, you know, if she told me that, you know, if she need anything else, she'll ask me, so, you know, we are waiting for the meeting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, later on, if she need, you know, I can submit whatever she need.
Great. So do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do there?
Yeah, I applied for the Class II license, which is used cars, so, which is already, I think, makes as a permit for 25 cars, for which we are trying to resell the cars on the plot.
Yeah.
So that's the whole idea.
And you've already been in front of the Planning Board for site plan approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We also, oh, Matt, because this is a special permit at one time. So Paul Miles, myself, Al Slusser, building inspector, all kind of got together so we knew if everybody was on the same page, you know? Sergeant Miles, Art Lawler, Building Inspector, Alan Slusser, and Planning Board. And you'll find that there's paperwork to back that up, that they're, they're in favor of it.
So there's, well, but this is strictly for the license. The land use piece would be the Planning Board's purview and the special permit and conditions thereon, right? So the only thing that, as I see it, the only thing that we're looking at is based on the, the site plan that we have here. Joe, do you have it as well?
The planning board has signed it. Yes, I saw it last week. We actually had that in our packet. I got that and some of the questions for the firemen.
Right. I went back to my last week's packet and found this, but, okay. So we have the, the site plan with the, the parking for about 25 cars, all in, including whatever else is going on there, to the rear of the property, behind, I guess that's the yard sale place, I put the name of it, Yellow Bear. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's the way I read it. All, all the parking up front, in front of Yellow Bear, and to the right of it, if you're looking on the street, is under that first building's special permit business, and then all of the parking that's contemplated here is in the rear.
Correct. Because the site plan that I have doesn't show which is for the used cars or parking in general for, you know, cars for sale.
You should have it. Signed off by Alan Slusser on 12120. Shows the buffer, parking for building one up front.
Yep.
But I think what Doug was referring to is there's usually a description on some parking is for the vehicles to be displayed for sale, and some is for the employees and the customers to park.
Correct.
Available parking for five to 10 cars. Okay.
It just shows available parking on the site plan dated November 20th. Let me just make sure I'm not missing something here, because we don't have a copy of the special permit. Yes, we do. Here's the special permit. I have that. But they only, they give a permit for the...
They give a permit for the use.
Right. And this is 2014. Yeah, I signed it.
I signed it.
I was on the planning board when this went through, yes. It's all coming back.
Alan signed off again, January 21st of this year.
Correct. Okay. And so how many car licenses this application for, sir?
25.
25 cars.
So that pretty much, if you had a 25-car license there, wouldn't that use essentially all the parking spots on the, on the site right now? That's dedicated for the, see what it said in the permit for parking?
I think the site plan says there are additional 10 parking in the front, I believe, and that is, there are another... Parking for the rear space.
Stand in the front for Yellow Bear.
Yellow Bear, yes.
So those would not be used for any used car sales up front there? This would all be in the back, correct?
Yeah.
Doug, I talked to Mr. Zuber today, and basically, regardless of, say, maybe Mr. Zuber wanted a young man with a used car license, when the police looked at it, basically came down to reading everything that Yellow Bear has X amount of spots in front, and then the used car lot was technically past that parking lot in the back. And if the used car lot ever moved to the front, that'd be another story for another day. But existing today, those cars are in the back, and then the parking in the front is for Yellow Bear.
That's correct. That is, that's what the Planning Board approval is at this time.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Zuber, how are you?
Thank you.
I do miss the bagels, though. Not, not gonna lie, my friend.
You're not the only one. Thank you.
You gotta, I gotta go all the way down to New Jersey to get a decent bagel now. I'm sorry.
Next time I see, I'll tell you a nice place in Granby, Connecticut, that carries the same type of bagels I had. They're very good. Lock, Stock &amp; Bagel.
Oh, right by, oh, I know where that is.
Excellent.
All right, I gotta go. Okay. So, Joe, do you have any questions for this applicant, based on what we're doing here?
Not really. How long have you been selling cars?
Say it again?
How long have you been in the car business, selling cars?
So I, I was attached to car dealership in Springfield last two years.
Okay. So you understand the paperwork side of it?
Yeah.
You understand every bit of it?
Last two years, I was doing the paperwork, and, yeah.
Okay. In this town, we're kind of tough when it comes to the book being there and abiding by everything. We're not like Springfield. They have nothing better to do but torture you. So you gotta keep everything, you know what I mean? You know? Mr. Zuber understands completely, and all I have to do is follow him, and then he follows you, and it doesn't end well. So just do everything correctly the first time, so we don't have to ever have this conversation again.
Correct, yes.
Understood? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, perfect.
I'm fine, Doug. I think everything's okay.
Where will you be doing the repairs on the cars you sell?
So in Westfield, in, I think, as I mentioned, in Orange Street, number 23, A2B.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's, yeah, Car Ripia Center, yes.
Is that affiliated with yourself, or is this just a company you've hired to do it?
I hired to do. That's not mine. Yeah.
Mr. Zuber, you got anything to say?
Uh, no, I, I'm happy with everything. No, I'm, I'm good to go. We've been waiting two months.
Well, we can't control the global pandemics and all. We're doing our best, buddy.
I know you have. Believe me, I know you have, and thank you very much for everybody.
If we still had the bagels, we might have been able to move it along.
I'll remember that the next time.
So, Joe, anything else we need from this applicant?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we're all set. You gotta close the hearing, ask about if there's any pros or cons, and so on and so on.
So, Carl, I gotta check if anybody wants to speak in favor of this application? Hope?
I think on all that.
Oh, just checking.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak against this application?
General comments, Mr. Chairman?
Very well, Mr. Fox.
Just for the record, you know, first and foremost, I want to say the Zubers are great neighbors. They're very professional. Even before they purchased the property, they came in and introduced themselves, and we've been working well as neighbors, and I thank them for that. But just for the record, I was involved with the issuance of this license back before I even became in a butter, and the reason why the permit was issued for the back of the parcel is because there was two businesses there. Another consideration was also the fact that there's currently a Class II directly across the street from this license. And with this license being granted, there are eight Class II and a Class I license between this location and the center of our community at the War Memorial and the town green. So I think it was the, the board at that particular time felt very strongly, they'd issued the license, but they wanted it to remain in the back of the parcel. So that would be my only comment.
Thank you. Okay. So I think you've heard that, Mr. Abdul, as far as the feedback that we have on this, this application and what we're, you know, kind of the ground rules and why it is how it is today and what we're expecting, correct? And entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Joe Dede will make that motion.
And I guess I will second the motion, Doug Moguln. All in favor? Doug Moguln, aye?
Joe Dede, aye.
Okay. The hearing is closed. Joe, what's your pleasure?
We can make a decision, right? I'll find with that.
You want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, Joe will make that in form of a motion, yes.
To, to grant the license as...
The license.
As proposed, subject to all the yadda-yaddas.
Yes, and I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, Carl, that stays with the property anyways. So if, if Mr. Zuber ends up with a different tenant down the road, they just have to come back in front of us for license transfer, correct? Or the name?
Sean, generally, what's, what's happened in the past before is if a landlord had a tenant with a, with a license like that there, and they gave it up or surrendered it, it would either be another tenant coming in fairly quickly, so that was the issue with this one, it didn't happen quickly. They would either come in fairly quickly, and they would become the new applicant, because they're technically not transferred, they're reissued. Or what's been done in the past is that sometimes the landowner themselves would go and have the license reissued to them, so they wait for a while till someone else comes along that they can have it transferred or reissued to.
Understand, Mr. Zuber?
I perfectly do. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, this is a pre-existing license, probably was around for a while, and there is a bylaw on the books that came in probably after, that you have to be 1,000 feet from another one. And this, obviously, since the other license is right across the street. Granted, even with this, with everything that's going on, the governor has suspended all the clocks on everything, so you couldn't have run out of the pre-existing license right now, so it's fine. But in the future, when there's not a global pandemic going on, I don't think this license can sit vacant or, or sit unused for a period of time. I don't know what that is, a year or two years or what have you. But anyway, so Joe, you've, you've made a motion?
Yes, I did.
Doug Moguln will second the motion. Roll call vote, Doug Moguln, aye?
Joe Dede, aye.
And Russ, you're abstaining, correct?
He's abstaining.
He's abstaining.
Yeah.
So there you go. That piece of business is done. I'd like to turn the meeting back over to Chairman Fox.
All right, thank you.
Applicants are done.
Hey, so call me in the morning, and we'll get moving on this.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, for your, for your support. Thank you. See you tomorrow, Cindy.
Thanks for the tip, Mr. Zuber.
You're welcome. Have a great day. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. We're back onto the agenda. The first thing is COVID-19 discussions and actions. Mr. Steinhardt?
I could share with you today that on the Lieutenant Governor's Conference Call with the municipal officials, is it's still a graduated process with a lot of different working groups in, in terms of how it applies to us. You know, we have people coming back, trying to get back to additional services online, on phone, as well as if people need to have individual appointments that can be arranged where, you know, Cindy can go and meet the Class II people tomorrow outdoors, or in the garage or somewhere. That'll be the way that happens, but nobody's coming into the building yet. I don't foresee that happening for several more weeks, so, because all the municipalities in the Governor's Reopening Board are taking this phased reopening of the different segments of the economy, including office space, very seriously. We are an essential operation, so obviously, we're, you know, we've been there all along, but now we're starting to increase our footprint presence. Along with that, I had the, let's see, the Building Inspector review, a full plan to make sure that we're going to be following the appropriate Department of Labor standards for the number of people that can be in sections of square feet. So he has generated a report that I will send to you guys when I'm finished reading it, and there's going to be some additional things that we have to do to space people out, but additionally, there's going to be some other issues we're going to have to do, like some additional partitions and plexiglass, and, and a lot of the things that we had already had a good head start on, we're going to continue to complete those items so that at a future date, we'll be able to start being able to transact business in person with the general public. But that's where we are now, and we're, we're, we still have a ways to go, as does every other municipality.
Carl, where does the money come from for this material as we need it?
Well, we're, it's coming out of things like, it depends on the nature of it, but it's coming out of like repair and maintenance accounts, maintenance activity accounts, and it's all being tracked, Doug, as part of our package that we're going to put together and submit under that other application that we have through Administration and Finance, for that CARES money.
Gotcha. Just making sure that you have...
All of this is going to go into that mix.
Just making sure that you have the resources that you need to, to do what you need to do in order to get the Town Hall ready for when we're eventually able to open, so it can be done ahead of time and safely, of course.
Well, of course, Mr. Vice Chairman, the other part of that is, you know, back in March, we did do a freeze of non-essential, non-essential spending.
Right.
And this clearly would be essential spending.
Gotcha.
Mr. Dede, any questions? Comments?
None.
Okay. All right, then we'll go on to the next thing. It's Southwick Police Department donations. They received a $100 donation in memory of Mr. John Torini, who passed away. So I'd need a motion to accept that $100 donation.
Doug Moguln will make that motion.
Joe Dede, second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Okay. The next thing I have is the F-21 budget and special town meeting warrant article finalization for posting. Carl, I think we're all set on the articles, correct?
Yes. Well, the, the draft warrants that you have in your possession represent decisions you made last Thursday evening, when I was off at another event that I had to deal with, but you removed some of the, the ones related to some road projects for acceptance, and then you remove one for signage under the special. So as, as you see, it's one of the smaller town meeting articles, you know, on the special, really some year-end housekeeping, and you've got, what, three articles there, which is, one's the snow and ice, one's the OPEB, which you got to do for your, your audit recommendations, as well as your funding of other post-employment benefits, and then year-end transfers from existing accounts for some adjustments. And then you have the bigger one, which is the, the annual, is still a small warrant, because you've got the, the election, you've got five or six boilerplate ones that are the housekeeping ones. You still have the road reconstruction for 1 million in there, so that's in all your financial models. You got the fire station barring for 1.1. You got the COMCOMs revolving, you have a bunch of revolvings, you got the annual budgets, school investment, school capital, all the CPC items that you would look for, except for the open space signage, which, you know, will be revisited at a future date. So, and then the alum treatment, we have to start paying for that. And then the, actually, the most important one, number 19, the establishment of the quarterly billing, which is important for cash flow. You know, that's, that's going to be a very important thing to have, to be under the crunch and pressure of doing semi-annual tax billing, but go to quarterly, so you'll have liability for setting tax rates a little later in the, you know, in the fall, which other communities that have the system are taking advantage of that now, when it's actually aiding them in their pandemic response. So are there any questions about that draft annual warrant?
No, I don't think I have any questions, but just make sure everybody understands the finance committee is reviewing what we did last week, their meetings.
They're doing that now. They have copies of these documents.
Right.
They have copies of the line item budget and the special and the annual town meeting warrants. They're going over that at their meetings right now.
Right. So hopefully, we can concur on the budget.
Because you need to be signing these warrants by the end of the week and posting.
Correct. All right. Any further discussion?
So where did we end up with the numbers, then?
You're, you have the model, right? Is that what you're asking about, though?
Yeah.
The model you have reflects the decisions you made last Thursday night, and you elected to keep, let's see, put another 100 in free cash toward the potential tax rate, keep the million in there and keep the cruisers.
Yep.
1796, Joe.
1796 is where you are now with all those decisions, Joe.
Yeah.
And again, that's just an estimate until we actually go through and have the value certified by the Department of Revenue.
Right. Did the finance committee wants to cut more? What do we do?
You could, you could designate the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to take any additional refinements or adjustments tomorrow after their decisions tonight.
What do you think, Doug? Would that be the safe bet, or leave it like it is?
I don't, I was at a good chunk of that meeting prior to this one, so I think they went along lock, stock, and barrel, unless they did something drastic after, after I hung up. So I don't, I'd be, I'd be okay with doing that, but I don't see any, I don't see any, I certainly would put that more... I certainly would put that motion forward if if there's any barring, any last-minute minor details, we should authorize the chair to to do that, just so that you have that.
You would want to do that, Mr. Vice Chairman. That way, if there's a variance of one item or one action, you wouldn't want to have to have a whole other posted meeting when you can certainly give that latitude to the chairman.
All right, we'll give him, what do you think, 20, $30?
Eighteen fifty.
I'll 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 put forth the motion for the chair to make any final minor reconciliations to the FinCom budget to the Board of Selectmen budget.
That was Doug Mowgli.
Doug Mowgli.
Yeah, Doug Mowgli. Joe Diddy, second.
All in favor? Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye.
All right.
Just in case, you know?
Right. All right, the next thing I have is a motion to okay the chair to sign the MVP Grand Extension for the Claus Anderson Design through June 30th, 2021. That's the project that we had the Lieutenant Governor out and the Secretary of Environment out. Due to the pandemic, we'd need additional time.
And it's
He was on TV today.
It's merely an extension of time to complete the services, not a change in the price.
So Doug Mowgli will make that motion to okay the chair to sign the grant extension.
Joe Diddy will second that motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye. Doug would chairman by now, wouldn't he?
I was kidding about that last week, yeah.
Are you guys attempting?
Well, one of us would be, yeah, but
Yeah, well, yeah.
Or or we would have made Russ the chair again.
Right.
Done such a great job.
Sometimes it's the two-year Fox plan, but other than that, usually, the rest of America rotates, but whatever.
Well.
I know.
I'm good. The chair will take that under advisement.
Yeah.
All right, the next thing is town meeting preparations with the town moderator. Mr. Diddy? Mr. Steinhardt?
Joe, you want to go first, or you want me to go, or?
We're all set. I mean, it's ready to go. Let's go. We're good. Chairs are lined up, bathrooms are lined up. We got two weddings booked. We're good, other than condoms on microphones, which falls under Steinhardt. I have arthritis. I cannot be putting condoms. I just can't do it. I'm not going to do 24 condoms in an hour and a half. I don't know.
Okay, let me let me speak to that issue. What Joe was referring to is we have placed an order for covers, disposable covers that are put on microphones. The moderator had asked for, so we we hope to have them come in for this meeting. I mean, they'll be able to be used for other meetings, but so that's something that we're we're trying to do as another safety precaution. The moderator had had met with, obviously, Joe and I and the town clerk, and the health inspector, and the chief of police, and the the lieutenant in a virtual meeting. And so he's laying it out again, and it looks like it's going to be the same east parking lot at the high school. And the special town meeting is going to be at 6 o'clock, and the annual is going to be at 6:15. Ben Foyle has okayed that, along with the changes that were made by the state to to allow town meetings to be moved, because normally ours is 7 o'clock in Tuesday in May, so now it's going to be in June, and it's going to be a little earlier. It is going to be outdoors. So he'll probably use the 17th as a backup date, and he's going to have a lot of things in place, like Joe said. Porta-potties, we'll probably have the cleaning, hand cleaning stations. We're looking at double the number of sign-in people. The last town meeting where we had 140, we only had people signing people you know, checking in for voters. So this time, we're going to have four.
You're going to have less people than that.
Well, you know, we, but moderator has to plan for more.
No, I get it. But I'm just saying, if I had the over-under, I'd take the under.
No, I I'm I'm but anyway, it's one of those things, you know, and Joe was was designated to secure the porta-potties, so he promptly volunteered for that. And then there's going to be this, the other types of things we need to look at, you know, water, sanitizer, trash barrels, signage, and then how to make sure that people are appropriately distancing and staying in their parking spot unless they're members of the same household. So the moderator's going to jump on this, and we worked out a lot of details last week in our our staff meeting with him on that issue, and there'll be more refinements coming.
Carl, I would also suggest no trash barrels. Take what you brought. That's been the problem with every every argument I've read with restaurants and everything else, that the biggest problem that they have for on-prem right now, outdoors even, is the trash, so.
Well, we may, we may, we may need the trash barrels for our own staff.
That's fine, but I mean, it's still an issue. So and and anyway, I'll talk to Joe off. I'll talk to Joe, well, Joe, I was going to, I'll talk to you offline.
All right.
Not Board of Selectmen business, just general meeting blocking and tackling, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so so those things, those things are getting ready to happen. Obviously, we're going to have a town election the week before. So we'll be using whatever lessons we learned at the the elections last week, which I'm told went very smoothly. In the number, you know, almost, what, 19 or 20% people showed up to vote? You know, we're ready for that, too, although you may want to acknowledge the fact that the the town clerk and the council and agent director have looked at the location of the polling and that it may be down in the senior center. So you might want to use this opportunity with Hope and Manone on our line here to just let them know that we're going to be keeping it all on ground level. And there'll be no need to go up on elevators and no need to be stuck toward the front of the building and that they're going to move the three polling places downstairs in the senior center.
I think we did discuss that last week, Mr. Steinhardt, but that was good. I think you explained it, that the elections will still be at town hall. The only difference, they'll be taking place in the senior center. And we have used the senior center for a precinct and polling in the past, so everything should work fine. And thank you and Mr. Diddy and the rest of your staff for working on the town meeting. Next thing I have is authorize the chair to sign an agreement for the joint CDBG CARES Act grant with the Town of Aglam for a micro enterprise assistant program. This is a program that will maybe help some of our smaller businesses during this pandemic.
Doug Mowgli will make that motion for the chair to sign the micro grant CDBG thing.
Joe Diddy will second that.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye.
All right. Next thing I have is to acknowledge payroll warrant 2024 dated 5/26/2020 in the amount of $218,850.28. I need a motion to approve the open session minutes of 5/21/2020.
Not completed.
Not completed. All right.
From last Thursday. Okay, Mr. Chairman, there was one item that was above that under your CARES Act sign up, another authorization.
Thank you. And I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign for the town to participate in Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Regional Domestic Violence Project.
I move to authorize the chair to sign for the town to participate with PVPC in the Regional Domestic Violence Project.
Joe Diddy will second that.
That was Doug Mowgli that made the motion. Joe Diddy seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steinhardt. I did miss that. All right, so we'll table that on the minutes till we have them. Again, we're going to make sure everybody knows we have a town election on Tuesday, June 9th, 7 a.m. to 8 p.m., town hall in the senior center. The following week, on Tuesday, the 16th, we'll have the special town meeting, an annual town meeting at Southwick Regional in the parking lot. It'll be similar to what we did for our special town meeting in back in March. Going to old business. The Southwick Fire Department Station project bid recommendations. I think we took care of that last week. That we agreed with the 1.1 million bond, and I think the finance committee also concurred. Is that correct, Mr. Steinhardt?
Um, yeah, I, well, obviously, they're going over the warrant articles tonight, and they had no objection to it during our budget reconciliation meeting. The only thing that was left to be determined then was 1 million, 1.1 or 1.2. And 1.1 was the number I worked out with the architect and also having money set aside for the contingency and the clerk of the works. The board will need to decide on how it wants to handle this, whether or not you want award sooner than the town meeting contingent upon town meeting vote, or want to wait till the town meeting vote happens and then make an award.
Well, we're only talking about a couple of weeks. What would be your recommendation?
I I I'll check with the architect, but I'm not sure it's going to make any difference. The the vendor, their parent, a little better, and everybody else does, and and obviously it depends upon your timing, obviously. Think about what we did with the lake project. Part of their process was, we already had that because of the nature of the work that had to happen and the and the speed of it. We basically had that contract already done, worked out, and we, and we signed it the day after town meeting voted on it. So it's really your, it's your call on how fast you want to be able to get that moving.
Well, would we be able to accomplish that with all the other work we're doing, finalizing the special town meeting, the annual town meeting?
Oh, this will, this would be, I would have the, I would have the designer work with the town attorney to put this together.
Okay. If you think we can handle it, I would certainly would like to do that.
Okay.
Do the board members have any thoughts?
Joe?
Joe?
No, I'm
Okay.
I'm not thrilled about spending, you know, but it works, like Carl said, it's what we did last time around, and it did work, so. I think it's all.
All right. I don't think we need a vote. Just have them start working on it.
Okay.
Contingent on the voters approving it at the annual town meeting.
Okay.
Mass DOT, we still have not had that follow-up meeting, but there has been discussions and emails going back and forth.
Some good progress.
Well.
Yep. We'll see, there's some good progress going on there, but it's going in the right direction now.
Good. Emergency Rental Assistant Program, we still have that on hold. Any other old business? Mr. Steinhardt?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Mowgli?
I just want to thank the Legion and the VFW and and the Channel 15 folks for putting on the Memorial Day Ceremony yesterday and getting that on to the Channel 15 and to the YouTube stuff.
Yeah.
During Memorial Day, so so it was, it was well done and you know, thank them for doing it.
Yep, I watched it. It was a very good ceremony, all things considered.
Okay. Mr. Diddy, old business? Okay. We're going on to new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I got nothing.
Mr. Diddy?
You got to throw in that vice chairman, aye? One couple more weeks, get it in there. No, I'm all set.
I told you, I'm taking it under advisement. All right. The only thing under new business I had, I received a call from the president of the Southwick Rotary, which we are members of. They are having a, they don't have Zoom meeting, they have a Google meeting tomorrow. So they asked if anyone that would be able to attend to contact Mr. Parent with your email address so that you could participate. Unfortunately, I have another Zoom meeting tomorrow night, so I cannot do it. But they will be addressing issues concerning cancelling concerts for the year, scholarships, and they have some monies that they're going to be looking for recommendations where to donate that to. I had suggested the Food Bank. But so if you have any thoughts and like to contact Mr. Parent, even if you can't attend the meeting, I'm sure he would take your suggestions to the meeting for you. But other than that, I don't have anything else. And if there's nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Doug Mowgli will make that motion.
Joe Diddy, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.